Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM in the August 7th Senate Council meeting. We will now move to the floor. Tonight's invitation is presented by me. If you would, please bow your head. Here we go. There, come up now. Much better. All right, tonight's invitation is presented by me. Originally, it was Councilmember Zabel, but he is not here tonight. Please bow your head and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, as we gather before you today, we come with hearts filled with gratitude for the blessings you have bestowed upon our city. We thank you for the leaders and council members who diligently serve our community, seeking wisdom and guidance in their decisions. Grant them, O Lord, a spirit of envy and understanding as they deliberate over matters that affect the lives of those they serve. May they be guided by justice, compassion, and a genuine desire to uplift and strengthen our city and its residents. Bless their efforts, dear God, with discernment to make choices that align with your will and reflect your love for all people. May their decisions promote positive outcomes and the well-being of every individual, regardless of their background or circumstances. Lord, we lift up our city into your hands in trusting its longevity and development to your divided plan. May your grace guide us, and may your light shine on our city as we work together for the betterment of all. For it is in your name we pray. Amen. Please rise and join me in the place of worship. I would like to reconstitute the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Tinsley, would you please call the robe?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley. Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Mike Zabel was unable to attend.
Thank you, Patty. Is Vice Mayor Shirley with us, or...?
Doesn't look like it, no.
Not at this time. All right. The first item, item number one, is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion. Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Right now, we move on to citizens' comments. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait for your call on. We ask that you look at your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to correct all your questions and comments to the council. Any council members who would like to respond to citizen comments, please hold your responses until we've reached council comments. If the city manager or city attorney would like to address citizens' comments, please hold your responses until you're designated to report time. Would any citizens like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and try to stand up.
Hi, I'm Mike Kelly, 2740 Lake Biscuit Street, West. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, so I wanted to come up at citizens' comments and express to the council that I'm in full support of the city manager's campaign to go ahead and consider purchasing a boat. I know that he's got good intentions for the purpose of which this boat is used, especially for his public works projects, your other objects that give us problems, that the boat would definitely help, one of which, and in 2003, we had our own police boat here, and they actually did a lot of maintenance, of all things, on the buoys. The buoys get barnacles all the time, they get heavy, they start to sink, and we actually had our police and our public works departments at that time going around maintaining the inside and the outside buoys. So I just wish God well moving forward on it, and you've got my support if you need any help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Would any other citizens like to speak on this topic, or any other topic? Okay, do we have any citizens online? Oh, yes, sir.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I'm kind of in the middle on this one. I've read all the feedback on the next door, plus its minuses. I think there's good in it, yes, but the one underlying concern I have is the seawalls for private property. I don't understand, unless it's in code, that it's the city's responsibility to inspect them. If that's private property, why is the city having to inspect it? I get about the buoys, the outflows and that sort of stuff, and to maybe a lesser degree, traffic enforcement on weekends or whatever. But I see the seawalls on these waterfront properties that being personal property, they should be responsible for it. So I'm kind of in the middle right now, but I'm kind of still leaning towards, yeah, it might be a good idea, but we just maybe need to do a little more research. I'd like to get a little more feedback about the seawall inspection aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Do we have anyone else in the audience before I call on remote comments? Yes, sir, please come.
Good evening. Bill Lusk, Lake Biscuit Street, West. Thanks for your time. I'll tag into what Mr. Hanson just said. Yeah, kind of interesting. I heard about the boat. I initially thought, that's a ridiculous idea, but as in everything, I started looking into it, doing my own research, listening to the city manager. I think that's my focus to stand up today, is to support the city manager. I trust what he's doing. I trust that as a city manager, he feels this is long-term. This is something that will help him as staff. I don't think it's fiscally irresponsible, which I think we need to step back sometimes and look at what do we do overall. We're pretty smart right now. We're pretty smart with what we're making decisions on, so I trust that piece. Just to help with the argument on both sides, I'll give you just a couple pieces of data. First of all, did you know, actually, I wasn't even surprised. That's our history. That's my probably speaking, that we used to have a boat, and it did more than policing when we had a police department. So that's a nice precedent. Other cities, Clearwater, Dunedin, even Madeira, sometimes we compare ourselves to them. They have arenas, they're municipalities, they have a boat. It's nothing tied to some of the information I've seen fly around. They have skips, they do a lot of maintenance. I think if I'm with the city manager, you might want to step back and just revise some of your comments. If this is something you really feel we need, revise some of the comments in the use case scenarios for the citizens. I think that one of Mr. Hanson's problems, not what I originally thought you were wanting to vote for, was city inspections of seawalls, which I don't think it is. We do have code. Everyone should review it. I'm starting to see things around divers on boats and inspecting cracks, and I just know that that's not your intent. I'll add that if you did rent a boat for two times a month, in five years, you just spent the amount of money on rentals that you would for what you're asking for, which I think is around eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars, but you put something higher on your budget. Can you always do better on research on what boat? Yes. Just that looking at that expenditure, it justifies itself. So I could go through this information I see flying around the city. Ninety percent of it seems to be addressed towards fear, bad decision-making, liability, a lot of litigious terminology. So maybe address the seawall specific. I think even without a seawall application, you can justify this. Take our pilings. Did you know that not scraping the oysters off, you lose yield on the pilings themselves? I didn't even know we had ownership of an island that you brought up that we should be maintaining. So just to clear up some confusion, maybe address that one that seems to be highlighted. Other than that, there's a lot of misinformation in the area.
Mr. Lusk, I'm happy to interrupt you just because we're...
It's for the best.
We're over the three minutes.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thanks for all your work.
I support your decision. Do we have other residents in the audience that would like to speak tonight? All right, in that case, let's close public comments here, and let's go to remote. Is there anyone that would like to speak remotely?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, okay. Please give us your name and address, please.
Roger, at Denver Mall 115 Causeway Boulevard. And Roger, you're going to give me three minutes in case I run over?
Yes.
Okay, please go right ahead.
I want to voice our opinion on the purchase of a hundred thousand dollar boat. In the July 24th minutes from the city council work session, the following reasons were stated to purchase a boat. First of all, to check stormwater outfalls once a month. A boat would negate the need to get permission from private property owners to check these outfalls. How many of these outfalls are actually on private property? We've been here over twenty years, and we've not heard that this is a significant problem. If it is, maybe it would be cheaper to rent a boat for a day a month to check the outfalls that we can't get access to. And I've actually talked to one of the rental boat companies, and I don't believe that we would see the cost of buying a boat over a five-year period of renting it. Continual buoy maintenance. From the past meetings over the years, we've never employed a person qualified to set buoys, so I don't understand how we could have a person who would be qualified on staff to maintain them. And if you've ever swam out to the buoys, you guys have known that the water is not clear out there, and checking on them would require scuba or dive gear. So does our insurance cover our employees to do this type of work? You've heard people speak about the seawalls. I do not believe we should ever get in that business. I think it exposes us to problems with our citizens' liabilities and other things. We have other options available. We can require homeowners to provide their own inspections on an annual basis and get a permit to have their seawall. As far as the sub-hydra monitoring those, we've lived here again over twenty years, and it's never been a big issue. Our current boat can monitor. Maybe we could put together a volunteer group as we do for the bridge and the beach. Remember, we don't own the bridge, and we don't own a good portion of the beach where we pick up trash and things, so our island should really take precedent with our volunteer groups. As far as another issue was objects in the water and underground debris. Our residents pay taxes that cover the Pinellas County Sheriff's boats and Coast Guard to handle this. Do we have anyone qualified on staff to remove underground debris? Most responsible boat crews will remove small objects in the water when they can, and if they're too big, then we do have agencies we can call. Dead fish. Again, our residents pay taxes and the county contracts out for this. Why should we double tax our residents to perform this task? I realize that the smell affects waterfront owners probably more than non-waterfront owners, but there are positives and negatives to living on the water. Another issue that was listed was derelict vessels. We cannot go aboard these vessels. It's trespassing, and it can be dangerous. Again, we pay taxes for the sheriffs and the coastguards to handle derelict vessels. These minutes state that we would have two routine bi-weekly patrols, plus maintenance issues and projects. Our current public work staff is very overworked. Who's going to conduct two bi-weekly patrols? I assume it would need to hire a boat captain and a non-additional qualified person to do that. That would be a considerable expense. In these minutes, the pros and cons of renting a boat were reviewed, yet only cons were stated. Those cons were timely accessibility to a rental boat, having a suitable model of a boat available that we required, and liability. There was no mention of the pros of renting a boat, such as no maintenance costs when you rent a boat, no insurance costs when you rent a boat, and no budget item replacement costs when renting a boat. Liabilities and issue, I think, whether we rent or own a boat. However, I would guess our liability is higher for the owner. I believe that it is the council's job to provide our citizens with complete information, and I think you dropped the ball. Also, I found the statistics of taxable values and comparative costs presented at that meeting extremely light. First to note, the condos in the statistics is skewing the data. Condo owners are part of our city and deserve to be included in all data. To compare harbor front property with our city streets is a faulty analogy. Regardless of whether you live on the water, you must use our streets to get to your house and to get in and out of the city, so there's no relevance in comparing city streets to harbor front property. We have to maintain our city streets for all citizens. For the record, I love a comparison with the state of spending fifty thousand dollars on a tractor to rig our beach. I'm actually not for this. Another point, according to our city manager's data, we have 1.1 miles of beach in our city. To spend fifty thousand dollars to rig four or five times a year is crazy. Again, we could hire it out or do nothing. We actually rig more of Bel Air Shore Beach than alone beach, and most of that is private property. Do we get permission from each homeowner to access their property to rig it? And if we do, why aren't we collecting a fee from them? I'm also against the term of the changes on Mayor S. Propose. We passed term limits a while back from recently. Currently, the maximum time resident can serve on council is six years. Then they must take a break for one year, one term before running again. The change to four-year terms and expanding the limit to three terms means that a council member must serve twelve years without being timed out.
Ms. Wall, I believe you've exhausted your six minutes. Is that correct, Patty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak remotely? Nope. All right, out of that closing, citizens' comments. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. We appreciate your comments. All right, we're on to item three, which is a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the monthly law enforcement report.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Portman with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Here I present to you our statistics for the month of June. There's a total of seven hundred eighty-nine events in the city of Bel Air, consisting of various directed patrols, house checks, and traffic stops. There are no crashes to report. A total of one hundred ninety-two citations and warnings were issued. A majority of these being issued in Gulf Boulevard and Causeway Boulevard. Consisting of six assaults and four larcenies were our reports for crime statistics. And a total of four people were arrested, varying from traffic interactions to one public arrest. Any questions?
Counsel. Questions, comments? I do have a question. Yes, sir. Without going into the identity specifics, what was the larceny?
I don't have those specifics, sir, but I can get them to you. Only thing listing our statistics is that it was just various tests. Nothing major to note.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Right now, we're on the monthly code enforcement report. Hello, Debbie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. Steve Clotkin, for the record, for the month of July, kept pretty busy. Again, continuing keeping up with a lot of the growth problems as far as weeds and trees. One of the biggest things that I had for this month, or this last month, was parking citations. Been pretty much patrolling all the beach accesses and parking iron areas to make sure that people are paying for the parking. I'm happy to say again that our unpermitted contracting work is down again, so I believe that the homeowners and these contractors are abiding by the rules of Bel Air Beach and Pinellas County. That's my report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? You're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You have a great evening. You have a see you next one.
All right, it's Pinellas Suncoast here tonight. Yes, sir, please come up. Please have your name and... Thank you for coming tonight, by the way.
Good evening. I'm Acting District Chief Steve Raish. I'm here as, on behalf of Chief Davidson and PMSFRD, to give your monthly report for July. In the month of July, there were eighteen emergency responses in Bel Air Beach. Fire EMS. Our fire training hours are reported as three hundred ninety-four point seven zero hours. Year-to-date, we're at seven thousand three hundred fifty-five hours. Medical training hours, one hundred sixty-one hours. Year-to-date is seven hundred and seventy-three point five hours. Total combined brings us to five hundred and fifty-five hours, and year-to-date is eight thousand one hundred and twenty-nine hours. Our update on Fire Prevention Division, our Life Safety Inspectors, our sixty-eight annual inspections have been performed, one hundred and twenty-seven re-inspections, one hundred and ninety-seven total inspections, two hundred and ten violations that were cited, thirty-five contacts for public education in July. Our EMS division, the district firefighters and paramedics completed eight hours of advanced cardiac life support training in July as part of a recertification with Pinellas County EMS. That is additional to the medical training that I already listed above. That is the final report for us.
Okay, before I call to counsel, I'd like to make a comment. You gave us a lot of data. We don't have anything to back it or to remember. I could possibly write all that down.
Yep, we can either send it or back it, or I can give it to you again, either way.
No, it'd be great if whenever you guys present, if you would leave a copy for the city clerk, so that we're screening all of us.
Can I leave this copy for you?
I appreciate it. Do we have any comments or questions from the council? No? All right.
All right, thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, item five, it's the attorney report. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, and thank you, counsel, for your indulgence last month as I was traveling and unable to attend the meeting. I did want to take the opportunity, ordinarily, I would have done this last month, but I do want to take the opportunity to briefly update you on some legislative changes that are starting to take effect between now and the month of October that will impact some of what you see or don't see, for that matter. The first is Senate Bill 170. We talked extensively through session about Senate Bill 170. Senate Bill 170 does a few things. As it relates to the adoption of ordinances, this is the statute that requires now economic impact statements for ordinances adopted after October 1st, 2023. So there will be an element of the staffing now that has to speak to, for any ordinance we adopt, speak to it, with some exceptions for sure. For instance, if an ordinance is adopted pursuant to make it compliant or consistent with state law or something like that. But with putting those exemptions aside, absent an exemption, we'll have to have an economic impact statement or business impact statement. Those should be relatively easy in the city of Bel Air Beach, where you do not have a commercial district to speak of. However, we still may need to note some of the more ancillary effects, as you are part of a barrier island community with tourism and the like. So that's one thing that came out of Senate Bill 170. Another thing that came out of Senate Bill 170 is the ability for litigants to challenge a city ordinance. As recently as 2019, the legislature adopted a provision that gave litigants challenging an ordinance as preempted the ability to recover attorney's fees. Ordinarily, in American legal system, you don't pay for the other side's lawyer win or lose unless there's a law or a contract that says so. Now, there's a law that, since 2019, there's been a law that says if somebody challenges a city ordinance, that they can, that they have the, they may have the ability to recover attorney's fees if that ordinance is expressly preempted. This has now been broadened from ordinances that are expressly preempted to those that are arbitrary or unreasonable. No, those terms are not defined. And so if someone brings a challenge that an ordinance is arbitrary or unreasonable and prevails, they have the ability to recover attorney's fees up to fifty thousand dollars. So that's a new provision. With that, there's also new language that where an ordinance is challenged as arbitrary or reasonable or expressly preempted, that the, that the ordinance should be suspended during the pendency of the preceding suspension of enforcement. So it's not enforced while the parties argue over whether or not it's legitimate. And there's a lot more nuance there, but that's really some of the major things that came into effect with Senate Bill 170. And those are changes to Chapter 57, 112 of the Florida statutes, and I've made your manager aware of these, and we're talking about how do you want to adapt as well as economic impact statements and the like. Another bill you should be aware of here is Senate Bill 250. We've talked about this a little bit. Senate Bill 250 is the bill that prohibits a community from adopting more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations if that community is within partially or entirely a hundred miles of where Ian or, I'm not remembering at the moment, where Hurricane Ian made landfall. It doesn't say first landfall. It says landfall, which is interesting since Pinellas County Pensoa made landfall more than one place. Regardless, we are, as the pro flies, within those hundred miles from Kacosta, where Ian made his initial landfall. And so that prevents the community from adopting any more restrictive land development regulations or comprehensive plan amendments through October of 2024, and is retroactive to September 28th, 2022, the day that Ian made landfall. And so if an ordinance is passed, that is deemed to be more restrictive or burdensome as a comprehensive plan or land development regulation, it is deemed void at initio, meaning as if perhaps void from its inception. So that is another gift from the legislature this session. Obviously, there's competing narratives on that. That facilitates redevelopment without government restricting it. The counterargument to that is governments adapt based on what happened in the storm and change their regulations accordingly. Those changes can't be implemented now. We'll see what happens come October 24th, when Senate Bill 250's amendments go by the wayside. But that is, those are some, two of the more notable ones. I tell you that, those two, specifically because it informs what you're likely to see or not see in the coming months. If you come and say, hey, Randy, I want to make it so our land development regulations restrictive in A, B, and C, I may say to you, we're not in a position to do that presently. And we'll have to analyze whether it is in fact more restrictive as a land development regulation we get with all of those things. But that may inform you and some of your supporting boards, to the extent the boards are here, members of the boards are here tonight. If you're on P and Z and you're saying, why haven't we seen any land changes? That's, that may inform the kind of business that the city does, and also for your purposes, when you start seeing economic impact statements or business impact statements in the coming months, and you're wondering, what is this new thing? Well, you know, addition, you are already thick packed it. That's, that's where that's coming from. So there are a series of other legislative updates that I can provide, and I've been providing those as they go. I'm happy to answer any more specific questions, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of those two more notable changes as they relate to how people go and suffer.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Do we have any questions from comments? Yes, Mr. Banker. Where'd you say the legislature determined Irma's landfall?
Uh, not Irma, Ian.
I mean, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to make sure. Ian's landfall is deemed to have been at Kacosta by the National Weather Service, and I mean, the Kacosta's down in Lee County, and we are up here in Pinellas County at miles like ninety-one to ninety-nine. In fact, it just, it curves like just at Target.
The reason I'm asking is because I've been in a fight with FEMA, you know, have given some support from the federal government. They're saying it was making landfall around Sandal.
It, which, Kacosta, I mean, I know they're nearish. I don't know if that...
They said, and that's why Bel Air Beach...
They said, and that's why Beller Beach City Keys didn't get at least insurance rates. And I said, well, let's take a quick survey here, that's a hundred, and they also made statement that in within a hundred mile circle, we get impacted. And I said, well, we're at a hundred and sixty-four miles.
Is it, and that measurement is that as the pro flies or by linear highway mileage?
Yeah, and what FEMA told me, it says, I think it's two hundred miles. And I said, well, that's typical government math when you can't get a...
I'll get you that when I talk in soup cars, very short.
Yeah, the generally accepted knowledge is that it was Kacosta, which is nearby, but again, it skirted several distances, and so it has more than one landfall. For purposes of Senate Bill 250, it just says landfall, it doesn't say first landfall, so for our purposes, we're within the range. Outside of ordinance changes, I did want to add, this Thursday and Friday, I think going into Saturday, is the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. I will be presenting there on Thursday for the four-hour Ethics Sunshine Month of the Breakers presentation. On Friday, I'll be doing the presentation as part of a panel on civility and efficient meetings and the like. So if you haven't already, I'm sure they still take registrations if you're interested. I know that's a last-minute announcement to make, but I did want to make sure you're aware.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. All right, now we are on to item six, City Manager Report. Mr. Reaper.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first project we have on the report is our upcoming this year 2023 budget. The major piece that we're working on right now is getting the RFP turned in through solid waste recycling contract services. We already issued the RFP, it's on DemandStar. We have three of the major waste players of the area, which are Waste Pro, Waste Connection, and Waste Manager, who are contract holders, or RFP holders. And we had a mandatory preliminary meeting, and they all attended. So over the weekend, we got the draft contract up and answered the first set of questions from the contractors, and the deadline for the submission is August 18th. So as soon as we get that in, we're going to immediately start reviewing and then beginning the selection process to make a recommendation for contract negotiation. So that's an important piece of the budget, and I just wanted to keep up to date with that. As far as dates, there's also the, in September is our first public hearing and on the budget and the proposed military rate. That's September 6th, it's a Wednesday because of Labor Day holiday. Currently, based on our last meeting, our last workshop, financial consultant and myself have been preparing the draft for that first hearing. The undergrounding project is moving along. The contractors have put in the three and four-inch conduit. They have started the bigger six-inch main conduit and the bolts with the concrete pads for the equipment. So that phase one section of the conduit is expected to be complete this month. And from there, it'll be pending on Duke Energy in Florida coming through and maybe with the wiring, which I expect to happen soon after unless we get some storms or something that hurts their resources. The stormwater improvement projects, I have a meeting with Geni Engineering, I was August 1st having a meeting and reviewing the 60% submittals for the engineering plans. We went over what they came up with so far as far as design, of course, there's some key points that I, and questions that I had. I need to make sure we're on schedule for a work session this month because I want to have a present where we're at on the design plans and verify the council for final design ideas. So I tentatively scheduled that for August 1st, which is our usual third Monday of the month. And then we will start working on the invitation bid once we have our design complete. The personal policy, personnel policy manual. There's an ordinance that we're giving our first reading tonight. The reason for that ordinance briefly is because in the history of personnel policy changes, we've passed by ordinance. So in order for us to adopt the new personnel policy manual, we need to pass a new ordinance that kind of relaxes the previous ordinances and sets it up for adoption by resolution, which is the way to go because there's no need to have two readings per ordinance for personnel policy. We can just update the resolution. So that first reading is tonight. I also provided the manual, just as a rehash. Worked at first taking the city's handbook and current manual, which is two documents, with a HR consultant occurrence group, and we worked through that to combine it into one useful document to the employees. And then after that, passed it through the city attorney's law firm, had them review all the, all the policies for, to make sure it's proper, proper legal wording. And we finished that, and that's what I presented to you with the agenda. The, as an update, I did get information on the intersection study that was mentioned, this probably about four or five months ago. It looks like the county's collected accounts that we talked about, vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic. Their consultant firm looks to put together a report, it's going to need a couple more months, but they have the preliminary numbers that they said they could start to assess. I just wanted to keep it up to date on that. Just to go over some of the things that were brought up with, with the boat purchase, the seawall inspection that kind of got a little out of hand. The main purpose was to be inspecting code violations on the water side of the properties. By no means do we want to thoroughly inspect seawalls or fit or qualified to inspect seawalls. I think the intention is to, which we see a lot more, is docks failing and lifts failing. The seawalls, we had in the past had a problem with seawalls collapsing into the harbor. The hope would be to identify seawall by general observation that it could be a major issue of failure, and then do what's within our means of trying to break out one from fault again. That would be utilizing our city engineering and our code violation process. That was my thoughts on that. The buoys, so the buoys, there is maintenance that you can do before you actually have to, you know, rework the whole anchor system. And some of that might be as simple as just unclipping buoy that's in the water and re-tie into a new buoy. And also, the buoys over time, they build up particles around the bases of them, so over time, it kind of affects the buoyancy and sticks the buoy in the water. We actually have experienced that currently. And that would be to go along, the buoy would to pull it out of the water and scrape off some of those particles to allow it to serve its purpose. There was some comments on the fish from Red Tide and the smell producers, and they accumulate on the little fingers and the inlets in the harbor. It is true that the county does contract out the fish pickup services, but usually for that to happen, it has to be an extensive fish kill in the mid. In my experience, it's taken three weeks to get them in operation. The last fish kill we had, they didn't even activate the contractors. Our staff went out there and picked up all of the fish and got what we could out of the water. But when the experience before that, when we had a fish kill and they did activate the contractors, we had all our fish picked up before they even got there. And mainly, the reason for that is it takes a very long time for those contractors to come through and hang into the fishing. And through our experience, the expectation of the residents was that the fish up a lot faster than that contractor was going to get there. So that's the reason with the staff. With other staff, was the reason we picked it all up before they got there. And then there's some mention of the stads, the streets versus the coastline. Some of those stads are just perspective. I was trying to give some perspective distance with some of the assets the city has. I don't think, no means is really trying to direct them there routes to coastline. So I think that was it.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
When I did speak with the transportation director for Pinellas County, one of the things he told me they were going to take a look at was the timing of the traffic lights at Gulf Boulevard, right near that intersection. So it appears to me that they did that. What he was going to do was have some of his staff, and you probably noticed that there's cameras there, calls away Boulevard and Gulf Boulevard. So he was going to have his staff monitor those cameras and see how the traffic flow was going. But it's, and I haven't verified this, but it's pretty apparent to me that they changed some of the signals for the good. If you're traveling from north to south on Gulf Boulevard and you're trying to make a left-hand turn to go across the bridge, that light didn't stay the green arrow very long. Now it's staying green a very long time, which I think has helped significantly with the traffic in the morning when people are going to work, to be able to make that left-hand turn. So that's a great thing. Also, I've noticed that once that light does turn red for the left-hand turn, if you come up to it, it's apparent to me that they made some changes regarding if you're stopped there for the left-hand turn, then there's no traffic coming from the south to the north, that light remains red for just a short period of time. And then the turn arrow turns green pretty rapidly, and if there's no traffic coming that way. So I think that kind of came back from some of the, our citizens that made that travel in the morning to work, and they've noticed that as well. So I think that the county did a great job with those changes, that has, definitely has impacted shortening the left-hand turn lane and backing it up. So that's a good thing. So additionally, on the 60% plan review, what were just a couple of things that you had to discuss with the engineering firm and give them additional info to make some changes with regards to the 60% to you?
So when we looked at the 9th Street, I told them that, you know, we need to do whatever kind of improvements we can there at 9th Street, and they examined the whole elevation profile of that road and told me that, that there's really not much room to work, right, because it's basically flat from those inlets that are further to the west that come to, to the seawall where the pipes meet at the end of the road. So I told them we need to find some way to give it some more flooding capacity and the pressure necessary to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can at that location. So they're looking into possibly connecting from the junction of the pipe down towards the east side of the road, connecting that with the system that is over by the retention pond to combine the two. So we're going to see if that makes sense, if it will improve the flooding of that. One thing that in our discussion that we really came down to realizing is that that is by far one of the most crucial valves that we maintain because that, that check valve is really what determines if it's, that it runs full water or not. So, you know, if we can give that the attention, it means that we know that it's always working, and that's really going to make a difference for those residents. So we're really looking at that. I wanted to make sure that, that we really explored what could be done in that area. Some other things we talked about were just what areas, does, how's the condition of the pipe? Is it better to line the pipe? Does anything need to be done to the pipe at this point? Also, we talked about flow in certain areas. Do we have a problem with flow? So is it necessary to change in that? Or is the inlet still in good condition and we're not, we don't need to do anything to it at all? So we looked at a lot of the different streets and compared the systems, and really, instead of just following what was recommended originally, we sort of used my experience of when I saw their new survey data of those streets and kind of came up with a course of action to justify what we're doing out there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other counsel? All right, Mr. Reaper, going back to the crossing. Resident reached out, I forwarded the email to you, and you confirmed that we weren't discussing doing that, removing that. Can you confirm that the county has not made that recommendation also?
They have not, you know, they have any, I mean, they're just collecting data at this point, so.
Okay. They're going to tell us what they find, huh? Unless they got a, you know, rabbit in a hat somewhere, I don't see that as a practical solution ever because they'll never be able to leave their street. So I just wanted to go on record and say that. Also, I appreciate you clarifying your easily convincing argument or justification of a vote. However, I think hopefully we've learned some valuable lessons about how you present wherever you want to spend money in Beller Beach. Other than that, any last comments or questions from the council? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reaper. All right, we're up to number seven, the city clerk report. Mr. Chantrey, you have it for us.
My report is just an overview of the meetings and hearings that we've had this past month, and the most significant being the Big C meeting where the topic was beach nourishment. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chantrey. Any questions or comments from Ms. Chantrey? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. This is items eight through 11. For approval of the July 10th, 2023 city council meeting minutes, approval of the July 17th, 2023 budget workshop minutes, approval of the July 17th, 2023 special city council meeting minutes, and approval of the July 24th, 2023 city council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda estimate.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second? Second by Les Benatere. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Now we are on to the regular agenda. This is item number 12, consideration of ordinance 23-04. Mr. Moore, would you mind reading the ordinance?
Happy, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 23-04, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, repealing previously adopted versions of the city's personnel manual, providing for the creation of Chapter 2 or Article 4, Division 1, Section 2-143 Personnel Policy Manual, making provision for the adoption amendment of personnel policy via resolution, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading, ordinance number 23-04, by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. This was placed only attended by Mr. Reaper. Would you like to comment on this ordinance, Mr. Reaper?
Yes, I covered a little bit of it in my manager report. This is because we did some digging into the past and found that ordinances were used to pass personnel policies and to make it a legal document to adopt. We need to pass an ordinance to kind of cancel off the previous ones and set it up in a way that we can do it a little bit more efficiently with resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Reaper. Before we go to the council, would any citizen like to comment on this proposed ordinance? Before we go to the counsel, would any citizen like to comment on this proposed ordinance? No citizen comments. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve this ordinance. Did somebody raise their hand for motion? I need a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion made by Ms. Livingstone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Ms. Livingstone, you have the floor.
No, I think Kyle explained it some very well. I think it's extremely important to implement these procedures, so thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Ms. Livingstone. Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes.
I have a couple of comments here. The social places refers to a city manager and other places it just refers to a manager. I'm assuming that's the same?
Yes, that is the same. I can go through, have that. I can have that changed out to all city managers?
On page 11, we talked about the personnel director. We don't have one of those. Is that, are we back to city manager?
How far down on the page?
We're on page 11, the third of the, the whole of that, the personnel director. Is that the manager?
Yes. I believe that that changed out.
And for clarity procedurally speaking, this ordinance, the ordinance tonight does not adopt the draft you're doing. These comments are well taken. What I want to tell you folks is if you do sit down with this document and find concerns between now and your next meeting, please let us know because it will be adopted on, by resolution, which is only one reading at the next meeting. This was provided to you now first so we can meaningfully get this kind of feedback and also so you can see why, if we're repealing it, what comes next, which would be the natural question. So, just want to be clear, procedurally, we're, this is more of a strike all ordinance. The replacement is previewed here and your comments, Ms. Notaro, are appreciated.
Should I wait and just give you the elder button?
If you have line edits like that, I think it may be easiest to get it to us in writing so we make sure we capture exactly what you're going at. And I'm not trying to, you as the counsel, I look for you, you're free to speak. I just wanted to make sure that if you have a series of substantive line edits, that might be more productive in that way.
Ms. Notaro, we're not adopting that tonight. In fact, it'll be at the next meeting under a new resolution. I think the primary reason for doing this is for expectancy if we need to make a change. And also, we don't have to pay for an economic impact study.
Well, doing it now definitely helps that way. The other part of this is candidly, we saw what was, a bit of this as we went through negotiating with manager candidates and otherwise, that we were looking at policies and there was inconsistencies between what was called personnel plan, what was the personnel policy, which one are we pointing to? And this is eliminating some of that confusion, it's streamlined, so we only have one government document for individual purposes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Would you like to continue?
No, I've got, you know, got a dozen other ones. I will send an email to Kyle and Randy.
Very much appreciated. Mr. Baker, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Are we, are we for this ordinance to adopt this personnel manual?
No, sir. We are voting to change the ordinance. We're actually stripping things out of the ordinance so that we can alter an employee handle by resolution.
Okay, so this would be the handle?
That will be. So we are proposing a resolution next month that will adopt what you see there. It's sort of interesting because what you've done historically, we did this, is sort of the housekeeping cleanliness of the record matter. You have periodically revised your personnel manual by ordinance, but it doesn't appear codified anywhere in your codified ordinances. It's just we would adopt an ordinance and then issue a act. And so, to avoid any confusion on what supersedes what, this says anything that was done in the past, we're about to supersede by resolution, and we're going to make it clear in our code that when we change this in the future, it will be by resolution. So there's no guesswork as to what is the best way to proceed.
All right, my biggest complaint is on page five, ordinance will, and page 11, this is Mary Action Fish Choice. No just for those figure, which is theirs. I can never vote against a 20-year rule. Sure don't get passed. Kyle, you're a great guy. People always love you, but God forbid you leave us or something happens to you and I'm going to hire a total of them. That's why we're going to vote.
Feedbacks appreciated. Do you have other questions or comments? All right, well, let's take it to a vote. Ms. Jentry, this is to approve ordinance 23-04. Would you please call the roll?
Counsel member Baker?
On the ordinance, yes.
Counsel member Livingstone?
Yes.
Counsel member Notaro?
Yes.
Counsel member Roberts?
Aye.
And Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously, five to zero. We will have a second reading and final vote next month. All right, we are on to item 13. This is to authorize city manager to execute an extension to the memorandum of understanding for accounting services. Mr. Reifler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our financial consultant, Andrew Tuss, he's CPA, and under him works Heather, who is our day-to-day person. This agreement is a continuing agreement and it actually has written included that they get a 3%. If we continue the agreement annually, they get a 3%. So, we started this within, as early as 2019, and we bought that 3% rate. This is just official acceptance of that we're going to continue to use them at the new rate, which is an increase of 3%. And that is budgeted in our upcoming budget to meet that requirement. So, I included the current memorandum of understanding and the pass along with the agreement for reference.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed. Before we continue, I'm going to need a motion from the counsel. Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Notaro, you have the floor. Any other questions or comments?
I said a quick question. Was there ever a time in our history where we actually had an employee that provided a service?
Yes.
On boats that?
About a few years ago? Two, three? Actually, no, it's 2019. So, yeah, it was shortly after our previous employee who was acting as a manager. I can't remember the official title. She resigned and this was dissolution.
Outsource.
Outsource, yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed. Thank you. All right, next up, item 14, authorization, or this is to authorize the city manager to execute a service agreement with Victor. I said it earlier. Very in it. Okay. Mr. Reifler?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the outcome of the past two meetings trial of this equipment that he's been setting up. Basically, when we started doing Zoom software for our meetings, we purchased a kind of a classroom-style camera. It's a wide zoom, but when we put it into action, we sort of realized it doesn't really focus in well on anything. So, the people at home watching and just see this hazy screen of what's going on and it's tough to follow. So, through talking to Mr. Varanik, we kind of came up with the idea of using his equipment, which is a little bit, well, it's a lot better than ours, high quality, to integrate it into our current system to provide a better live viewing experience for people at home, which is, you know, zooming in and out and using multiple cameras. He has a much better microphone that kind of picks up the room. So, over those two meetings we were testing and I saw the improvement from the first meeting to second meeting, and he's continuing to improve it already. So, this disagreement, it incorporates that him, the extra manpower needed to do all the administration of these cameras, the operation of cameras, the microphone. And also, the plus is like, as we saw tonight, when we have remote speakers, he's at the helm to control all that for us. So it's kind of a solution we needed. So, yeah, I believe that, you know, the price that he's offered to do this service is, I recommend that we take it. I think it drastically improves the viewing for people that want to watch a meeting from home. And the more residents we can get to participate or watching meetings, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Before we continue with the counsel, maybe go to the citizens for comments? Anyone like to speak? All right, citizen comments are closed. Before we continue, I'm going to need a motion from the counsel to authorize a city manager to execute this service agreement.
I move that we do exact that. That we allow a city manager to negotiate or to work with the firm they're working with and execute this contract to provide additional service.
Did you get all that, Patty?
Yes.
Would anyone like to second that? Second. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's obvious that this is going to provide a better product for our citizens at a fee that's not really that bad. So I think anytime we can do that, and if this allows more citizens to participate in our meetings, that's a good thing. So that's why I'm in favor.
Other questions or comments? I would like to say that I'm very impressed with what I've seen so far. I'm sure that this is a service, the way that everything's changed, there's still room for improvement, but I think that as we have more and more meetings, you will definitely get dialed in. My only complaint at this time is sound. I don't know how we can get on top of it. The sound was better, but I believe it was a distancy weird echo that definitely threw me off and it was difficult to listen to. But I have a good feeling you're going to get that dialed right in. And don't be afraid to, if we move forward, just don't be afraid to come to us and say, hey, I need you to speak up a little louder in the next meeting, or get the microphone closer, or whatever. Any other questions or comments? No? All right, let's take it to a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Victor. Look forward to working with you. And Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed. Thank you. All right, we are now on to unfinished business. Do we have a unfinished business? No? All right. We're now up to city council comments. This month, we begin with Council member Livingstone.
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk for a minute about citizen comments. I really appreciate everybody's feedback. You know, our job is to take the expertise of city manager who's learned in attorney mora and with your guidance, hope to make what's right for the city. So all city comments are very much appreciated. I think sometimes there might be some data out there that's not accurate, but the fact that that's why we come together to talk about that and to bring everybody back into perspective. And I believe it was Mr. Luss, I believe, that stated there were several other barrier island cities that also have a boat. I wasn't aware of that. So, that feedback I really appreciate it, as well as everybody else's feedback. So, let's utilize our time wisely and use our citizen comments, use our time to express how you feel about things because that's going to help us make our decisions and do what's right for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Livingstone. I guess it was ladies first tonight. Ms. Notaro, your next.
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Roberts?
Nothing new.
And Mr. Baker?
I've been speaking of flood insurance these past meetings. I've been working with Senator Scott's office and getting frustrated, to say the least. We finally went to FEMA, spoke about a month ago. We got a generic political letter back from them. I was pushing the issue a little bit farther at FEMA and we found out that there's a case 2.23 CB 01839 filed against the NFIP at FEMA. And these are all the reasons I have been citing that towns and cities, and there's 10 states that have entered into this lawsuit against FEMA and NFIP, towns and cities cannot find their discounts that they've been afforded under FEMA 2.0. Also, when a citizen like myself complains or a resident complains and says, hey, I've got a flood elevation certificate on the fourth feet above this, I should be getting 40% off on my flood rates, FEMA cannot give any answers to this. So this suit was filed, it's supposed to be expedited, but we know how the government works. They're hoping to get an answer back sometime this year. I don't know if there's going to be retributions, you know, recovery of money or whatever like that, but this is a mess and a half. I just want to chime in on the purchase of the boat too. I don't think it is to our best interest within our city to buy a boat for a price of $85,000. Reasons, one, we do not have the staff equipped to maintain or perform the task required. I want to note, we only have two maintenance workers here. They can barely keep up with their journey now. We further have to purchase underwater equipment or some other duties noted. If we do buy a boat because of the duties about inspecting buoys and everything like that, possibly going into the water, we may need three people on the boat according to Coast Guard standards. Renting a boat, we could enter into a lease with some aid. This would emit maintenance, storage, insurance. I want to note, boat insurance presently is four grand a year with the quote. Arguments of leasing and purchasing have been talked in to citizens. Some say it's better to just buy the boat and in a couple of years, if we lease the boat, it will pay for itself. I did some research on that. If I'm a tourist and I want to go buy or rent a pontoon boat, it'll cost me $500 for six hours. Times two, okay, we're going to use it twice a month, that's $12,000 a year. Times five, that's $60,000. Minus $4,000 times five years for the insurance, that's $20,000. We're now down to $40,000. And that's using a pontoon boat as a tourist. We could simply enter a lease with a boat company, get the boat whenever we want it, use the boat when we need it. Probably costs in a five-year period under $20,000. Leasing a boat, we don't have any maintenance. Anyone that's owned a boat, I'm sure there's maintenance on it. I had a boat years ago. It was a big hole, I threw my money. All right? I found out that we did have a boat, as was noted tonight, when we had our police department. Where the hell is? I heard we gave it to the Pinellas County Sheriff. Please.
Whenever the sheriff's department took over our entire operation, they got all the equipment, all the inventory, the sheriff subsequently sold them.
Money lost. So, I'm totally against buying a boat. Kyle, I think you're a great guy. I think some of the arguments you made... Kyle, I think you're a great guy. I think some of the arguments you made, maybe we do need to use a boat every now and then, but I just don't think this city can afford $100,000 for a boat. We don't have commercial business in the city. If we keep these spending habits up, what's going to happen? I don't believe Indiana Rock has a boat. San Key doesn't have a boat. I'm just dead against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, concerning beach nourishment. On 26th of July, Bel Air Beach hosted the Big C where county administrator Barry Burden and public works director Kelly Levy discussed the dilemma created by the Army Corps of Engineers and they're digging in on requirement or requiring 100% easements, which by the way, they got ours. They also responded to the multiple demands that they've received from myself and other mayors to immediately self-fund the nourishment projects with the TDC money that has been reserved for that very purpose. Many of you may have seen that it's about 36 million at this moment of our money because anybody who has a, who pays the bed tax, it goes into that fund. And by the way, that's only a half cent on every dollar collected. The rest of it goes to advertising primarily all over the world to bring people here to guess what, see the beach that's no longer here. So last week, there's some good news. Last week, the Board of County Commissioners voted to place me on the, you're not going to believe this, the Tourist Development Council. By serving on the TDC, my primary function will be to keep reminding its members the importance of maintaining our shoreline while urging the county to increase the bed tax and to do the right thing and let's go it along and quit waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers to change their mind. If others are able to put an end to the stalemate at a later date, they should have no issues with us protecting our land during the Corps' project blackout. Also, last week, I had a web conference with Representative Luna's chief of staff and Clifford Gibbons of Bel Air Beach. I wanted Mr. Gibbons to have the opportunity to share his ideas on how to motivate the Army Corps. Ms. Natero, you may have recalled, he was an important player in making that happen. They were receptive to Mr. Gibbons' ideas, but assured us his suggested tactics had already been tried and fallen flat. They have another plan to permanently resolve the problem with the Corps' requirements, but will not be able to implement it until sometime next year. Basically, what they're going to do is they're going to insert some language that will prevent the Army Corps from being able to do this ever again. Supposedly. We'll see if that actually happens or not, but right now I have no reason to believe otherwise. I was assured that Representative Luna had made beach nourishment her top priority while she is in office and plans to hold a Q and A session for all mayors on the Big C on August 14th. Let's hope that she has some good news for us. Finally, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to contact me directly concerning the possible purchase of a city on boat. Even more so, I'd like to thank all those who cared enough about our city to look beyond a social media post and an anonymous email from a fictitious organization for the whole truth. As always, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and to those who also watched this meeting remotely. Would anyone like to make a motion? Motion, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Roberts? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.